Possession which we adjourn to the public forum. So just so everybody is very clear on how this proceeds. Uh from our board policy, D E D. The board encourages comments about the district members of the public. Anyone who has signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with the board's procedures may do so. The board asks that each participant's comments pertaining to district business be no longer than three minutes. Um for any member of the public who is accompanied by a translator, your time will be doubled as required by law. Does anybody here have one to translate? In addition, the board has adopted policies to provide prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns for employees, students, or their parents, and the general public. Office of our district policies and procedures on public comment and filing complaints available at N D I S D dot net. Alright, we're gonna move on. And the first speaker. Our speaker will be Belinda Jenjett.
She's kind of, she's kind of like a hobbit on.
Mine is regarding uh school board elections. Uh two years ago, we came in and on the first person to run the board, they created a seat coming up. Uh and when they uh they asked this person if they could take the seats to come in. And he was re-elected. And then he resigned. And you appointed someone else that was not present for the seat. And many other persons did not get it on the bottom line.
I'm sorry, but uh we are not allowed to small talk because of the other reasons that is included in that.
I'm just asking is why someone else was appointed that didn't run? But you can't. I don't think it has a legal thing that you can't respond to that. It's a valid question. And it has to do with school board elections. And I want to know why someone else was appointed when they didn't run. And you appointed them. I think I deserve to answer that in some way. If that's how the school board elections were ran, the community needs to know. Was it because you didn't want any other person on the school board? I think that is an issue really. You still don't respond?
We cannot respond. It's in our board policy. And indeed, these statutes, you do not respond. People come in, if you want to contact them later, phone call, whatever. But it is in our policy, we have to follow.
So can I just re-press? Is there a one that we can give the sanctuary board's response?
That must have just been your phone call. Board meetings are set up for board members to discuss agenda items. For both of the people can come and express their concern. We welcome you all to the board.
Is there, as far as being able to respond, provide answers to this question?
We can, we can provide factual answers, we can provide board policy. That's what we can provide.
Those are our only comments that we.
Yeah, I know you respond.
So if they give it after the last question?
They'd like to address the board, they go to their public forum, but really can't get on to give those private citizens. You can speak about any item on the agenda. As far as putting a person on the agenda, they just need to go through our policy. Just going to say it was on our online board, on district policy, agreements policy. That's how they would get on the, that's not like we'd get on the agenda.
Our next speaker is Amanda Garcia.
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 Um for those who don't know me, my name is Amanda Garcia. I've been a citizen here for a while. I've had two children, and quickly, youngest is the senior here, this year she'll graduate. Um after some hypothetical information came out, uh Mr. Reed and Mr. Nolan, I had come to you several years ago about coming up with a program from C I S. I was told we were a socioeconomic school and we could not afford it. Well, after this information has come out, as your leadership, we could afford it. It was just that money was going to different avenues. So therefore, I'm telling you face to face, I have started a petition to vacate you from your seat. I do not believe that you have been a good sufficient leader uh for this board and for this whole district. So I'm telling you, I don't have to hide it. So there you go.
Alright, it's Andy Willis.
I'm gonna pass right now.
Brenda Martinez.
Good evening. The information that has come to light and for review so far is supported by actual documentation has left this community and school with a significantly damaged reputation. In an age where teachers are struggling to find reasons to stay in classrooms, you provided exhibit A for why they are leaving. It has been rumored that some of you have even made attempts to intimidate bully teachers. This is unacceptable and deplorable behavior. If you have been complicit in these actions, you have at minimum committed a betrayal of public trust. And at worst, a possible theft of public funds. In a school district of seven hundred students, wherein sixty-five percent are reported as economically disadvantaged, there is absolutely no purpose for exorbitant and hidden administrator roles. Students here at New Deal I S D have been routinely marginalized, and now we know that some faculty have been as well. Our students have lacked opportunities for growth in the arts and career and college preparation while bonuses and opportunities are distributed among an inner circle. The lack of opportunity for our teachers translates into a lack of opportunity for our students, which means they are not competitive for scholarships for furthering their education beyond high school. You asked for our support to build a new elementary school, and we gave that to you, recognizing that our facilities across the board are substandard, and we are willing to pay higher taxes to provide our children the chance to have restrooms without exposed rusty pipes, to be in classrooms without the stench of dead rats in the ceilings. But now we see how our taxes have been spent to date. You have created doubt regarding your ability to make reasonable and appropriate fiduciary decisions. From here forward, we, the taxpayers of New Deal I S D, call for the following. Transparency in all actions. Engage a broader group of parents and citizens on advisory committees. A salary and equity study that will ensure all teachers are compensated fairly and incentivized for helping with academic enrichment activity. And all positions should be justified and be in existence to support first, the academic mission of the school. This is just the beginning. We expect our board members to represent and reflect the values we desire of New Deal I S D. People of experience and diversity who can come together for the good of the district, its students, all of its staff, and all of its faculty, and not with a bit of a few or be directed by a single voice. All of you should resign immediately. Understand this, the days of operating in secret and outside the public eye are over. If you do not resign, we will take action to have you removed. You have sown the wind, and you will reap the whirlwind.
Keith Arkey.
Keith Arkey, I was born and raised here, have more pride than probably most of y'all here. This has been my life, my home. But to look across this room, I have friends. But there's a difference between friends and business. What y'all have done under the leadership of one has got to stop. If I run my business like y'all have run this school, I would be broken. Therefore, y'all are just misusing my tax money that I work my butt off for every year to pay land taxes and everything else. And yet, we're in this shape? Let's have pride. Let's get things back right. Let's pay teachers what they're supposed to be paying. And not just a few. If they're good teachers, pay them. That's how you keep people. If you have good workers, you pay them to keep them. If they're not good, get rid of them and find somebody else. But don't sit here and just play with certain groups. We're wasting money, and the pride is going down the toilet. And y'all had gone to this school, mostly y'all had graduated. It was a place we fought for. And now look at it, it is run down. And it only took one person to destroy a town. And y'all are all a part of it too. You can't tell me y'all didn't know what was going on. I know when stuff like this goes on in my business.
I think almost most of y'all know me, I'm Patty Martin. I'm not here to represent the brand. I'm not here protected by the circle. I'm a wife, I'm a mom, I'm a grandmother, I'm an aunt, I'm an employee, and I'm a taxpayer today. I want to ask the board, why was Jimmy Nolan given a hundred thousand dollar bonuses in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen? I don't want to hear that his contract was bought out. This is another untruth. I have seen the contracts. Was it for a job well done? No. New Deal was one of the eleven school districts in the state of Texas to receive an F rating based on the two seven, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen financial data. Was it because we had updated our schools to make it safe and healthy environment? No. Look at what our kids are exposed to daily. Then I would like this picture to go around. New Deal I S D is a Title I, Two A school. We are a poor school district. Many of our kids are at or below poverty level. I want to know how a hundred thousand dollar bonuses could possibly given, be given out? What was in our reserve balance when these lavish gifts were distributed? I have worked at New Deal I S D for thirty-one years. Jimmy Nolan retired in two thousand eleven. I attended his retirement party. I had no idea he was still employed. Taxpayers were paying his salaries for those years, not even knowing he was employed. Where was he? What was his job description? Where are his evaluations? Where are the daily documents showing his job, that his job was being done? He was not in the employee handbook. He didn't attend the staffed-in services. How, as a fellow employee, was I not informed we had a second superintendent? I want to state that New Deal I S D, the teachers are about the kids. They work hard, and they deserve a lot more than they get. They spend their own money on supplies and anything they need to help our kids. Just think of how many, of how all of this money we evidently have could have benefit, benefited our children. The extra resources could have been spent wisely on what really matters, the students of New Deal I S D, not the line in the pockets of ghost employees. The sad part about this is you board members are my friends. I trusted you. That trust has been broken. I would have never believed it had I not seen it with my own eyes.
Hello, my name is Dr. Paula Strickland, and I'm here to seek clarification on vacancies within the school board. I understand from others in the community, the school board has a member who no longer lives in the district, whose cognitive status is not intact. He has not attended more than half the meetings this year, and the position has to be filled. He is an excellent board member and has been to our community forever. According to section eleven point oh six oh eight, if a vacancy occurs on the board of trustees in independent school district, the remaining trustees may fill the vacancy by appointment until the next trustee election. Since the board member has not lived in the district since January twenty twenty-two, what are your plans to fulfill this position? How do you determine who gets appointed to this position? Do you select a friend? As someone mentioned earlier, the rumor around the community is the board members have already contacted who they plan to appoint. And he may be a qualified candidate. However, I would also like to be considered. In addition to being a qualified voter, as per the requirements of section eleven point oh six one, I bring the following advantages to this school. I am a longstanding history of New Deal community, and I am invested in seeing its growth. I live in the district, I pay my taxes, and I'm a qualified voter. I was a graduate of New Deal in twenty, two thousand and five, and I have two kids who attend New Deal Elementary. I have demonstrated a belief of power of education. I am a college graduate with a bachelor's, master's, and doctoral degree. I am an educator, I'm a nurse, with experience working with students as an associate professor at Texas Tech Health Sciences Center School of Nursing. I use innovative technology philosophy to teach my students daily. I have a, I have business and management experience. I have experience with a large-scale budget management at a higher education institution and can bring that knowledge to this school district. I sit on many boards within the Health Sciences Center and across the nation. Please let me know if you want to review my C D. Now is the time for a change. And for you to appoint a new board member. Gone are the days that friends get appointed. And instead, candidates that have, bring a diverse and relevant qualification to the table that can truly transform New Deal I S D should be sitting at that table. As you have heard tonight, the community is not happy. I'm glad to answer any questions you have for me.
Whitney Dunn.
Good afternoon. Most of you know who I am. Um I'm Whitney Dunn, I've been here for ten years as a teacher. This year, I became a parent in the I S D. Um I also became a community member this year, and I'm speaking on behalf of my fellow teachers. And I'm gonna get choked up. Every child deserves a champion. An adult who will never give up on them. Who understands the power of connection and insists that they become the best that they can be. Each day, I think to hell y'all that the people in this room, these teachers, our admin, they come with their full heart. We don't just teach sticker curriculum. We teach these babies how to be good people and respectable. What are we showing them? We are professionals, and we have been trained to facilitate learning and accommodate different learning styles. When we are discouraged or burned out, we go back and we remember our why. The why for myself and for my colleagues are our students, always. Someone once told me, they say teaching isn't personal, but it really is. We take our job, our calling, very personal. We pour our hearts and souls into these classrooms. Parents and guardians, if you're listening, please note that you don't need to lose faith in us because we're gonna keep showing up every day, no matter what is happening. We don't enter this profession for this salary. We spend our own money, we work more than our contract hours. We pour our hearts into lessons because we were called to serve in this classroom. Last year, I reinvested over seven hundred dollars of my own salary on curriculum and activities for my students, as well as reaching out to the community for donations for a library for my classroom. Was it necessary? No. Was it, and is it important to me that my students have engaging activities and fresh books to help build a love of reading? Absolutely. I've been doing it again and again, and I have for the last ten years in my position at New Deal I S D. I guarantee if you ask any educator standing in this room, they could confirm that they have done the same for our students. We are celebrating the new school. Our babies deserve it. They deserve to come to school in a place that is clean and up to date and not feel less than. We are so devastated by all of this because it is a reflection on us too. For me, it's not just that people have gotten stipends or step-ups on salary schedules, but it's that our students have done without.
I'm with Chris Strachey on the laptop, resident here, right here. And for the most part, proud to be from New Deal, but there's been some heat-ups. There's been some heat-ups. This is like David and Goliath. You gotta have, you gotta be willing to stand up for your belief. I am standing up here representing all the people that are too afraid to speak out and afraid that they will lose their jobs to come talk to you people. It's a shame that people can't voice their opinion to y'all without feeling that they're losing their job and their job's gonna, they're not gonna have a job. They're afraid of that. We shouldn't be afraid of that. We should be able to come and have different opinions and still be friends when we leave. But we've got to be able to do that. We are here for the kids. Sometimes I think we lose track of the reason we are here. As a taxpayer and a business owner, how can we trust the board to be good stewards of taxpayers' money? All of you are parents. You know, once trust is lost, it's hard to earn back. And you'll always have that doubt. Hmm, do I really trust this kid or not? And that's the way we feel right now. Can we trust the board? The trust has been broken. With this new bond, how can the community trust y'all to be good stewards with their money? Will it really be used to help the students? Or will it be used to fat in the pocketbook? Just this week, I heard a teacher talking about how they had to buy the pencils and markers for the star test out of their own pockets. Maybe the school board should be better stewards with the money and make sure the school has the supplies for the star test and not expect the teachers to buy their own. Words really don't mean much without action. Most of you have been on the board a long time. It is disappointing that y'all's lost focus for our kids and what's best for our kids and not spending the money for our kids and spending it on individuals. As a taxpayer, the trust with the board has been lost. I feel the only way to start a human process is to ask y'all to step down and let someone else be the good steward of our money. Thank you.
First of all, I'm Ronnie Hiswick, and I'm just damn proud these are my women right here. When all this started coming online, it brought to me, I didn't believe it. I'm sorry I didn't believe her. I had, I'm fact-byeing. I wouldn't know what was going on. So I requested all the records. Here they come. Well, guess what? This young lady's not lying at all. When I look at what has happened here, when I look from two thousand ten, two thousand fourteen, they're paying the guy by Stephen McCrady. So we're paying him a hundred eighty, hundred seventy thousand plus, paying Jimmy Nolan a hundred thousand. Why are we paying superintendents straight to close three hundred thousand dollars for five years? Can y'all answer that? Oh, you can't answer that, that's right. Uh, the next thing is, why? Why? Y'all need to think about that. What were y'all thinking? That's our money. That's not just y'all's money, that's our money. So then he comes back in and gets these big lavish contracts, two hundred thousand dollar bonuses. Yeah, it's not a buyout. I read through all the contracts. It was bonuses. Unacceptable. Unacceptable for what's happened to our teachers, our school. Everything's, it's not where it was. Boy, I've been here forty-five years. I'm not a newcomer. And this is just not right. When I look at the salaries, oh my God, if you're not in the circle, you're here. If you're in the circle, you're here. That's not right. And y'all can, it's evident, it's so easy to see. You should pay for a position, you don't pay for the people. And that's what's happened. Y'all let that get above and beyond. When you look at some of these salaries, they're paying ninety-five thousand, sitting in there and playing ping pong all day long on their phone? Don't have to talk classroom twenty-plus years while all these teachers are teaching seven, eight classes? What's right about that? Nothing. Nothing. This has to be addressed, adjusted, and everything has to be fixed here. They're right. Y'all have lost the trust of this community. Half of them are here because they're attracted to me. Another half, like some said, are afraid to speak. I will speak for them. I want to know what's gonna happen. And I will, I do, if we can get on, I'll do third, what do we need to do here? I want to be on the agenda. I want to know what we need to fix this. We're fixing forty-eight million dollars of my tax-paying money and everybody else's. I want to know who's gonna take all those decisions? This group right here? Unacceptable. Not enough knowledge, not enough uh knowledge on construction? What, how are you gonna do that? I know you're gonna have somebody helping you, but are you gonna run them all in? Are you gonna have it from me outside the committee helping you? What's the plan? I'd like to know. Next thing is, why are we having two superintendents? If this man can't do his job, get him out of here. Guess what? He can. Let him do his job. Don't have somebody shoveling on top of him, coming in there telling him what he has to do. We know things like that happen. So that's gotta change. Worst thing you can do is business, if you and this guy meet, you've worked forty years together, you don't leave the old regime in. It don't work. You get rid of it. They have to move on. You can't retire two or three times, keep getting paid. Unacceptable. It's time to move on. You guys, let me get it together, or I'm gonna agree too, y'all need to resign. I'm willing to give you an opportunity, and I want to see what's gonna happen. But I think we also need, these jobs that got filled, no good. I've seen this for many years. Y'all do, hold on. Y'all do feel like my old friends or things like that. I've seen it, I've been around. Next thing is, qualified people, put them on the board. You need more women. I see one lady in here. Why? I know you can't answer. But I mean, seriously, that's, we got, this is a great school. We've been here for years and years. So can't, can't continue. We're investing properties over here, wanna help build. We want to build New Deal to do standards, new heights. But it's hard to do when you're seeing what's happening in today's world right now, so. I'm gonna ask all of y'all to, to sit back and consider what's going on and really have some deep thinking about what's happening here. Because I've known you too long. Thank you.
Um I actually can either just address Mr. Reed specifically, but seeing as we can't have any questions answered, I'm just gonna pose it to everybody here. Since becoming superintendent in twenty nineteen, prior to my husband's situation, were there not two other educators that were also forced to leave this school for accusations of misconduct with students? I'll go ahead and answer. The answer is yes, one hundred percent. Two, I'm gonna ask you another question. When those allegations were made, were the students, students enrolled in the district at the time the allegations were made? The answer to that question is also yes. Were both of those educators reported to the T E A? I know one was, because I looked it up on the website. I don't know about the other one. Were both of those educators reported to the Texas Rangers? Were both of those educators written in a press release and sent to the media to make sure everybody and their mommy knew it? Appreciate the answer to all of those questions is no.
Alright, that is the end of the public forum. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like to, to see how things are conducted. But we appreciate you, kind of, we appreciate you changing your, your date. I know that we were supposed to have this meeting last- I know that we were supposed to have this meeting last week, but our architect could not meet with us and we need to meet with him on a regular basis, so he will be here tonight. And that's why the meeting was changed this week. We do appreciate your concern. We know that you care, the school, the kids, the teachers, everybody. We listened, we couldn't talk, but we've listened, we do appreciate you.
But has this made any difference to y'all?
Absolutely.
I mean, or is it just, they'll get out of here and go on? Because I'm coming back for the next meeting, I'm gonna come back for the next one. We're gonna figure this out. But I will say one thing, I don't hold it against Mr. Gossett. He ain't been here long enough to be involved in this. This is a trainer that keeps getting used to. The only other thing I'd like to say is that lady right there is the only one that had the cojones to bring it to light. And we all knew what was going on, but everybody was afraid, including me, to rock the boat. Not anymore.
We will be watching. We'll be watching, we'll be back.
I got a question. I don't know the doctor, but when is the answer come to all the questions that were presented in this meeting? Or how do we go about that?
Well, why don't you call the board members and ask these questions, we can answer them first.
I've got one problem. Everything in this room is about a phone call or a private meeting. And that gets, that gets old. Everybody in the public's addressed here.
We're not allowed in a, in a board meeting to address.
And I understand, Paul, but I, I just, is there a forum or we can come back for the next one? I mean, they've asked you valid questions and I just want to know, but you can't respond. And I know you've kind of been here as a board. And I, 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 this is a citizen, I want to know how you go about getting answers to those. If you can't answer them, then I guess we all wasting our time. And I think there's some valid statements. Okay. I'm not a political dude, so we'll just leave that alone. But I think there's some strong, strong candidates. I mean, I would motion right now to put Hollis Franco in that seat. And I think Mr. Lee would nominate that as well. He's been for years. So I don't think an appointment needs to come from here, I think it needs to come from a vote or a special election. I know we're past that. But I think there's some solid, solid candidates in this community that deserve that answer. And I think when you walk in everywhere, New Deal, New Deal, your son plays for New Deal. Yes, my son does. And yes, we're transplants here from Kentucky. And we made a choice to come here. And if you think for one minute these teachers don't do a favor for our kids, there's no doubt. And I've met with Matt Reed, I've met with Matt Reed when it was bad, when it was good. That's a fine man. And I think that a lot of people need to get off Matt Reed's back and let him do his job. Because it's hard to do your job when you got fingers on top of it. And that man, Mr. Nolan, I've lived inside him, I've lived down the street, that's an evil individual. And you'll never clear up anything until the cancer's gone.
You gotta quit paying the problems to fix the problems.
All I can talk about is eight years of experience in New Deal. And this is one of the finest places I've ever been in my life. But I think you need to get a lot of things straightened up, and I think you need to get some new influence on this board. And anybody's welcome to comment, comment. It doesn't matter, I just want answers to the questions. Because I, that girl right there, phew, I'd hate to be her husband, she's smart. It's like dealing with my wife. There's some fine educators.
She tried real last time and she got bullied.
And, and that's gotta stop.
Yeah.
You've got some fine competent people that need to address this.
One question. Not being able to respond, is that a district rule?
Board policy, yes sir.
Board policy here.
Who set that policy?
Because I've been on school board, and it's state policy that you can't respond.
There's copies of our policy.
So this who proceeds that?
It's our board policy.
That's board policy was set here at this group.
Who set that board policy?
That's not what TEA says.
That's what our attorney. Okay.
Just don't wake us another bank cash. I won't let anyone in here and stuff like that.
That's not funny.
Yeah, it's not funny at all. It's not funny at all. If marriage, if a lot of stuff that mirrors, we start beating. Don't thank it, don't. Thank y'all.